Hey guys, we're gonna get this started. I talked to Counselor Allen, he's gonna start remotely. There's gonna be a joint meeting, but basically it's still just going over some of the things as far as we talked about in our maintenance and development. So with that in mind, while we're waiting, we'll just introduce some of the people who are online. I see Chris, starting with Chris, I see Chris, Signoli, and Lindsay. And I see my Chris. There's a Robert. Who's a Robert?
Yeah, that's me, it's Attorney Sujak.
Okay. And I see my colleagues, Counselor Davia, Counselor Bruce, Counselor Perez, Counselor Govan. And with that in mind, we'll get it going. I know Counselor Counselor
Whitfield.
The Counselor Whitfield. With that in mind, we're gonna, Chris, I'll just let you go over some of the things that were reviewed. You know, and then we'll just give it, you know, the brief overview of what we were speaking of and some of the concerns. If you can, we'll just open it up to you, Chris. Go ahead.
Chair Counselor Brown, thank you very much. As we discussed at our meeting a few weeks ago, when we had our Maintenance and Development Committee meeting, the major item that I'm looking to do within this ordinance is obviously increase the bulk ticket for mattresses and box springs to two tickets, sixteen dollars to put us, we are still going to be woefully behind other communities. But as of right now, that's the request that we are making. The modifications that we are also requesting inside of the document are more cleanup than anything else. Get rid of some conflicting information between the two documents. There are two documents, one is the solid waste ordinance and one is the rules and regulations that was put together by the control board. It is not an ordinance, but I want to make sure that the languages in the two documents match. The other item that we've added in is that there is an appeals process if we were to stop trash service for somebody, so we wanted to make sure that that was identified. I've had to do that a number of times over the last few years, but we wanted to make sure that that appeals process is in writing. As of right now, our bulk as far as mattresses, four years ago, it was a break even. We were probably spending about thirty-five thousand dollars or so a year. Excuse me, about thirty thousand dollars a year and bringing in the same amount in income. Right now, our bulk for mattresses is gonna be about two-hundred-and-five-thousand. And we're bringing in about fifty thousand. So mattresses right now, we are losing money on significantly. It's unsustainable over a number of years, but we're losing money on it. So by increasing the sticker to sixteen dollars will double our income. It's still a loss. However, what my goal is at this point is, I know that there are mattresses coming in from all over the place. And my goal at this point is to increase the price, stop the material that's coming in from outside of the city and be able to get this under, under control. In talking to other communities, nobody has seen an increase like Springfield has. And I feel that is simply because of the price that we have. We are collecting basically about thirty-five mattresses or box springs every day. So we're doing about seventy-five hundred. When we do the math out, it gets us to about thirty-five or so a day. So we're talking about a significant work effort during every day. And right now, we don't have a truck that handles that. So we're making three stops a day, having to come back to the yard to do that. So I'm hoping to be able to get the price up, get the volume down a little bit. And be able to, because right now, this, this increase is just gonna end up getting tossed in as, as part of the debt calculation. So from a tax standpoint, it ends up on taxes. So what I'm hoping to be able to do on this is just increase the price for that only. Get some of the language a little better between the two documents. Identify the appeals process and move on from that. So that's kind of the general overview of what we are looking at inside of DPW.
And Chris, I think as far as the mattress, you know, when we, when we met last time, you know, it makes sense, we're losing money. I think a lot of times with where, where I think the body and a lot of us, we, we had issues like this time is kind of like figuring out there was other fees that weren't being collected by different, you know, different, you know, we didn't have, remember you said you added where now you're gonna collect certain fees that we weren't collecting, that were on the books and things like that. And then the actual trash fees and being able to making sure the different penalties and things like that, the fines and things like that. I, I, my, I, I know as far as like with me and a lot of my other colleagues, my thing was, I know that we're losing money. I know that it's I know, I know that it's, it's cutting some of the funding as far as the mattress stuff. But when we're adding new, new, new expenses and things to the people, I figure that's still new revenue sources. So I was still wondering as far as maybe cutting some of that and giving some of that relief to maybe like veterans and seniors. Was that, was it able, since it was never on the books, like my, my thing is maybe now, since we're now adding that and we're able to collect some of that stuff. You know, the bells and whistles, so say now we, 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 we collect a hundred dollars. Can we give fifty to the seniors and then we put fifty to the books? I mean, that's kind of like why I wanted the accountant Tim here. You know, while we're adding some of these things, it, it makes sense when we're also considering constituents also. Especially if we're, if we're saying we're gonna, we, we have to do it. I wanted to see, and I know some of my colleagues, I'll, I'll let my colleagues, if you guys have any concerns or anything. I don't want to speak for you guys, but I know that was kind of like trying to see, you know, some of the money, giving it up as coming to the city. Can we give though, give some of that resources that we're bringing in to the different people?
The, the only thing I want to add to that, there are no other fee changes. The only fee change is the increase for, for the mattresses. Nothing else is being increased or changed.
No, I don't mean the actual changes, but there was, it was stated that there were certain fines and things that were on the books. And we weren't actually implementing the different fines in the process. Remember the last meeting, you spoke on something?
Right, yeah, we, and, and the problem we run into is when people do things wrong, we just end up not, not picking up their trash. And there's no financial incentive for, for somebody. So we want to have the fines on the books. And I put in two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. If the counselors so decide they want it to be cheaper, that's fine with me too. I just wanted it to be consistent versus having, you know, one of them be ten dollars, one of them be zero and one being two-hundred dollars. So I want to have them all the same. So if people are, and usually I'm just dealing with the same people over and over with that. So the, the only thing that we've done there is modify the fines. No other fees are being changed.
And there were more, there were more fines that you spoke of other than that. You said it was, I would say you said there were dozens of fines that were actually, they were, they were fines, but there were no actual dollar amount implemented in order to to enforce them. You said you added that stuff, that, that
Right, all, because in the ordinance as it was approved, I'm just getting big feedback through Focus.
Okay, you're good now.
Okay. Yeah, the Focus one keeps giving massive feedback. Yeah, oh, there we go. Hopefully, hopefully that's better. Yeah, there were, all the fines were listed in there, but when the ordinance was passed, I think it was in two thousand and eleven, it was redone in seventeen. The fines were left as zero. Well, I shouldn't say zero, they were just left blank.
Yeah.
So I'm, you know, I'm looking for, you know, I put in a number, like I said, we have a lot of things that, you know, that the cities had to pay. You know, last year I probably paid fifty thousand dollars out of pocket for various fines. You know, bad things in trash, radioactive material, things like that, that people are putting in trash that I do, if people are gonna be the ones doing that, I want to have the ability to, to find them either through the DPW, through ordinance or through code violations as well. Right now, we can issue a warning, but there's no teeth behind it to be able to, to have a fine. And even right now, when somebody doesn't pay their trash fee, we can't stop service. So it is, you know, a lot of the teeth in, in, in order to be able to do the proper collections that we have aren't there. So I wanted to get those in for, for the fines as well. And, you know, like anything else, we issue warnings, we issue warnings, we issue warnings. And the only time we would issue fines is that after a number of times that somebody's not complying, that we're eventually gonna end up having to issue a fine because, again, the city's paying for it one way or another anyways.
All right, thank you, Chris. I see, I'm gonna just let, open it up. I see some of my colleagues have questions. I see Counselor Perez and then Counselor Davia, Counselor Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, my only concern has been from the beginning first, the increase. Now, the increase from eight dollars to sixteen, which it was not done by increments. And, and my son, a little bit when he's sixteen, but now eight dollars for the mattress, eight dollars for the box spring. That was my concern, it has been from the beginning. And I know that some other cities and towns are dumping the mattresses here. I, I, I would like to see what prevention, because I don't feel, I don't want to feel that my constituents are being penalized because of other cities and towns. And the second part of it, and I have to excuse myself to another meeting. My biggest, biggest concern is that people is gonna be overflowing the trash bins and they're gonna be left out in the street. What outcome, we have to put some stipulations in place. Because what's gonna happen coming the next week is gonna be overflowed or my concern is that we're gonna see a lot of trash around. I'm dealing with that as we speak and you know that because, thank you very much. The other day, there were four trucks of trash that it was removed by the city. But it's, it's so open, just leaving the trash bin because they are overflowed. I have a bigger concern with that. And can you please elaborate on that? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, we have, there is an item that's been in the ordinance for a number of years that if you are going to have material that's overflowing, all you have to do is purchase a extra bag sticker for two dollars. And those can be placed next to the bin and we pick them up. So the overflowing trash bin causes two things. Number one, it's, it's kind of gets a little unsafe when we're trying to unload those barrels. And number two, when they're overflowing, a lot of times they end up falling out. So that's the reason why we want to make sure. But that is the item that's in there about overflowing trash barrels. Nothing in there is changing. That's the, the rule as it is now. It's also a DEP rule as far as closed barrel tops, because then you get vermin and things like that. So one of the, we have an item in there, like I said, if you have an overflowing trash barrel, all you need to do is buy an extra sticker, extra bag sticker, and you put that out with your trash and we pick it up.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question, please? Yes, I haven't finished. So, so if you think the trash is gonna be, the bins are gonna be overflowed, you have to buy an extra sticker for the extra bags and how much that, that costs?
Two dollars.
Two dollars.
Two dollars, yeah. They're available at all the big Ys, like the bulk stickers, and they're available with the city clerk.
And that's for the regular trash bags?
Yes, yeah, regular trash bags, yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And Victor, Counselor Davia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. Good to see you, Chris. Chris, I got three, three things to, to ask you. Let's start with staying on the subject of the fee. I need to walk me through your logic, Chris. If I'm not mistaken, we are charging eight dollars right now and you're proposing to go to sixteen, correct?
Yes.
Now, I do believe in the last meeting and you mentioned that all the communities that charge anywhere between thirty to fifty bucks?
The cheapest around right now is Chickaby at twenty and the most expensive is Ludlow at sixty-five.
Okay, that's a big difference. Now, so I know you say quite often that we have an increase in mattresses, which I think we all have appreciated.
Yep.
And I think in the past, you have mentioned that the city is losing in the deficit roughly a hundred thousand dollars in mattresses.
About a hundred, about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty thousand. So can you help me understand the logic? I, I see what you're trying to do, but I'm still kind of stuck on this. If we're still gonna be the cheapest around, even if we increase to sixteen, how is that gonna keep people from coming to dump their mattress here and buy the box sticker here? They're still gonna be cheaper. They're still gonna be saving money.
Well, my initial reaction was rather than kind of, oh, I don't want to say overreacting, but, you know, going up to say thirty dollars or something like that, I wanted to look at it in increments to see that if it was going to have an impact or not. One of the things that I'm noticing now is it is becoming extremely noticeable with certain residents, I'm gonna use residential addresses rather than residents. So rather than going like up to thirty or something like that. The other item, the reason why I did it at sixteen, I was actually thinking about twenty. I didn't want to have to all of a sudden create a different sticker just for mattresses. So that if a resident goes and buys a sticker and for mattress and they end up not using it, as some people do, they can then use it on other items. So if they were to buy, if we were to buy just to have a simple mattress sticker, that would be the only thing they could use it on if they ended up not needing it. So I was trying to keep it without having to reprint stickers and have them just for mattresses as well, to be able to make everybody's life a little easier if they were going to be putting a mattress or a box spring out.
Right, Chris, you throw there, but I do believe the ease of what you just said was that you wanna rather go by increments to see what kind of impact it's gonna have on people, correct?
Yeah, if, if this does the job and we get a good reduction down and it, and it starts, you know, I'm not gonna say saving us money, but making our deficit a little smaller, you know, then I don't have to worry about, you know, jumping up too much. The other item is that I want to jump up too much easier and then we start looking at a lot of illegal dumping in the city, because that, that does happen. And I, and it hasn't been too bad over the past year, year and a half. I thought it was gonna be worse, but it hasn't been too bad. So, you know, I, I'd rather, if we weren't gonna end up doing it, I would rather do it in increments just to see how it works. So that if we were, it's not my goal that I think we're gonna have to. But if in a year or two years, we look at it and say, hey, this really stemmed it, you know, and then we don't have to change it again. So I'm just looking to see how this will do for a lot of different reasons.
Okay, now I believe that there's something on the ordinance that talks about three, three, how, three or four apartment, that's the maximum that
Three, yeah, three, three living units, three families and under is what we collect and have been collecting for years from residential properties. Anything over three families, the owner has to get private trash collection.
Okay, now, Chris, staying on the mattress situation, are these mattresses being dumped primarily in multifamily houses? Or are they systematically through
That's, that's where I'm seeing it mostly. And, and where I'm seeing it is where a property owner is calling and I'm seeing multiple collections. Meaning that I'm seeing in a year twenty-five
Right.
or thirty at a particular, at a particular location. I then am able to do research and determine that they own multiple properties, both within and outside of the city of Springfield as well.
Well, Chris, with this particular situation, I know by no means I'm suggesting that we should increase this. But I, my first reaction is that we need to close this loophole, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in deficit to zero. Okay, I know that you're trying to, to, to lower the most you can, but I think if we are going to keep it at sixteen, as you're suggesting, I believe that then we need to step up our enforcement for something, because I think you're asking for two-fifty increase for fine, correct?
Yeah, I was, I was asking everything to be at two-fifty simply because that's what a lot of the fines are in code for different things. So I, that's where I was starting. And as I said, if, if the council so wants to make those difference, I have, I have no problem with that whatsoever.
Because I think, I think, you know, honestly, I, I would not feel bad if somebody who's out of town comes here, gets whacked with something a little bigger than two-fifty. I don't have any problem with that. Is there any built-in, in your opinion, issue if we're gonna differentiate between out-of-town residents versus in-residents in the fine structure itself?
No, it, it basically in the, in the, the way that I look at it, Counselor, is if somebody is abusing the system and they're bringing stuff in, our opinion, bringing stuff in from either other addresses or from out of town, I have the ability to stop service with them. And I've done that probably a half dozen times over the last year or year and a half with those types of individuals. And they don't get a fine, they just have trash service stopped. They, so they lose trash, recycling, yard waste, and they have to go get it on the private side. And then we're not collecting bulk from them anymore. So when I've been seeing the real egregious ones, we've basically been going after them and saying, there is no way on God's earth that you've been able, you know, if you have a two-family house that you've had thirty-two mattresses in the past four months, you're abusing the system, we're gonna stop trash service. So that, that's in there, that's always been in there, but it was, the appeals process was a little wonky in there. So what we have is we have a hearing that can happen now. So we want to make sure that if a resident is doing something the right way and we overreact, that they have a, you know, they have a way to come back and talk to us. They don't get fined, they just, and on something like that, they don't get fined, they just end up losing their trash service.
I see, Chris. So I would love to continue that conversation about that particular fee, because I think that, again, we need to, to, to get that threshold to zero. Because I, I don't see it well, we're losing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and I'm sure neither do you. I would, I want my colleagues have to say on that, how we can work to closer more, whether that is to a step-up enforcement to discriminating against resident versus non-resident in the, in the fee structure. Because again, I feel no sympathy for somebody who decides to come here and abuse our system and basically illegally dump. So that's, now moving on to the other one, the representation, which you talked about in the appeal process. I, I will feel more comfortable, Chris, if we have resident participation on this. My initial reaction to have a city council appointee by like a city council president, because right now it's just gonna be somebody from your office. Can you run that through me again, it's like white people in that committee?
It is, it's our, and I just want to find it here real quick. It is the Solid Waste Committee is the mayor, city treasurer, mayor designate, city treasurer designate, somebody from the CAFO's office, somebody from three-one-one, someone from the law department and somebody from the public works department. And I'm just looking to say here if there was anything, yeah, those are, those are the, the people associated with that.
Okay, I just have curiosity, why three-one-one?
Three-one-one is the one that takes all of the appointments and, and keeps all of the information. When you call for a three-one-one or you, you call for an appointment for anything, three-one-one has all of the records associated with that. So if your address or your name, you've requested bulk or you have appointment for household hazardous waste, three-one-one keeps all those records.
I see. Again, Chris, I would love to discuss the possibility of adding a seventh member to it, to make it odd numbers. Again, I think being appointed from the city council president would be quite appropriate on this. What are your thoughts on that?
I got no issue with that.
Okay, all right, well, I will see if we can make that happen through an amendment on, 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 in that portion, sir. Now, my last point is, if you indulge me, Chris, radiation, you talked about radiation and that would definitely did get my full attention. Huge issue, I know you talked about the truck has to be put out of service for a couple of days, it has to be contaminated. The trash has to go through a special process. I believe you mentioned that the person is put a notice, and this could be the human radiation or animal radiation. So what, can you elaborate more on that? Because that made me very uneasy.
Yeah, we've had, we've probably, I don't know, probably had eight or eight to twelve over the past three or four years, where whether it is a person or an animal, mostly cats, because most residents have, you know, kitty litter inside their homes. So if, if a resident or, or a human or an animal is going through radiation treatments, where we've been running into on the human side is where the older generation is being treated for radiation or with radiation and they may have a diaper. With cats, it is, if they have, are having radiation treatment as well and you're cleaning out their litter box and throwing their litter box out. A large percentage of the time, the level is so low, it makes no difference. Where it ends up being an issue is that over time, when you're using the barrel and depending upon the amount that is in a barrel, it triggers us at the transfer station location in Agawam. And when that happens, as you said, Counselor, they gotta quarantine the truck, they have to go through all the trash. Everything stops there, nobody else can, can deposit any trash. So you now you have ten or fifteen trucks lining up there, they can't do anything until this is located. And then once it's located, what we've ended up doing is once we find out where this happened, we put out a notice to, you know, because we know that it's in a neighborhood. Then we go out with a notice, then we go out and start testing barrels with our Geiger counter to be able to determine a particular location. We then notify the homeowner that says, hey, you need to notify your doctor or your veterinarian to be able to determine what you can do with this material absent putting it in the garbage. So that's what we've been doing, what we are, from a fine standpoint, I wanted to put that in there to make sure that, you know, the first time around, I'm never gonna find anybody. It's gonna be when it happens multiple times. And in a couple cases, it's happened multiple times at the same address, where it's ended up costing the city probably between three and five thousand dollars each time. So something that ends up costing us, you know, ten to fifteen thousand dollars on a resident. You know, we want to be able to have that in there and let them know that if this were to happen again, you know, there could be fines associated with the, with the cost.
Now, Chris, how, how much, so with this radiation issue, is this mostly animal-related or human-related?
Could you say that again, Counselor?
So with this radiation issue that you're talking about, is this mostly due to, to animals or to humans, if you were to break it down?
I think right now, it's probably been about fifty-fifty. Mostly older, mostly older residents, a lot of, a lot of cancer treatments have an impact and they end up having to wear diapers. And when they're disposing of an adult diaper into the trash, you know, you could be doing two or three a day. And if you're going through radiation treatments, when that finally hits the trash stream, you know, could, could put off a pretty good alarm. So I think it's about fifty-fifty as far as I know.
Well, Chris, I'm trying to get a handle on this. So how often a year do we have this problem, which everything comes to a halt because of radiation?
Probably, probably two or three times a year.
So it's not, it's not rampant per se, but it's enough to, to make us lose at least forty-five thousand dollars a year?
Yeah, and, and it, it just ends up being a royal pain, you know, I end up having a driver sit there for three hours. You know, the place shuts down. Like I said, it happens a couple, three, four times a year. And we end up, you know, we end up finding out where it happens. And like I said, it's been a couple of times where it's been over and over on that. But we want to make everybody aware, we've been putting out notices to doctors and offices to let people know, not to, you know, throw certain things in the trash. But it's, you know, we haven't had one in about four months. I think we had one early, early summer.
Excellent.
So
I, I will close with this, Chris, with the refreshment I, I will close with this, uh, Chris, uh, with the, uh, refresh my memory, what is it that you're looking to do with respect specifically to this, uh, subset on the radiation?
Uh, number one, put it out there of what people can and can't put into a, uh, into the trash, because I, right now, some people just don't know. For, you know, if they're having treatments or something, what they can, need to be able to talk to their doctor. And then if it does happen multiple times, that there can be a fine associated with it. And/or the responsibility of the homeowner to pay the fees that we have to pay. Uh, we have to pay, because we then end up having to pay a, a fine to the facility, we end up having to pay a fine to DEP. And then we have to, uh, uh, then pay for that material to be brought to a different location. So we end up paying for that, that's why it ends up being about three to five thousand dollars, depending upon the volume. Of what we're dealing with and what condition we're dealing with it, because sometimes if we, if you find it in a bag. And it's not crushed, sometimes if it's crushed, now you have contaminated a whole area of trash, so. That's what we're trying to do, number one, get the notice out, let people know. And then number two is that if it happens, give them all the information again. And then if it happens a third or a fourth time, now we can at least start to go after, after these residents.
Uh, how much is the fine?
I had two hundred and fifty dollars or the cost of what the city incurred to deal with that item.
Okay, and, uh, if you, if you allow me, Mr. Chair, just out of curiosity, I'm gonna finish with this. Do we have any kind of specific place that? We can specifically dump this on in the city or in Western Mass? Like, we know this is a problem, I'm sure this might be happening in other communities, but have we even looked regionally? How we can, uh, approach this issue, because if we have this problem, I'm sure the other communities have this problem as well.
Yeah, what, with the radiation, what happens, it's taken to another facility where it is basically left out. Until a point in time that the radiation disperses. And ends up not being issued, because all of the trash that gets, that is taken care of in Western Mass is all burned. So it cannot be burnt until, uh, the levels reach a certain amount. So it's basically quarantined, and I want to say it's ninety days, I may be wrong on the number, ninety or a hundred and twenty days. And then it is tested again, once it gets below, well, below that level. It then can be transported for, for, uh, you know, normal burning.
Okay, alright, thank you, Chris, um, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, but, um, I see Counselor Gobol has a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, um, I think you might have answered one of my questions. So when the, say, uh, uh, more than a three-family house or a three-family house. Has thirty-five mattresses in the year, is that correct? Is that what you said, something like that?
Well, that, if we don't, we only deal with three-family and below. So when I've had issues over the past year, year and a half, you know, it has been, you know, two and three-family homes. That are, you know, calling us for twenty-five or thirty mattresses over the course of a year. That when I look at a house that might be total five bedrooms or six bedrooms. The math just doesn't really add up, and in one case, uh, and in most cases, I shouldn't say, oh, I, I'm gonna say most cases. It is not an individual owner who owns that home, it is a management company, a property management company. And the first thing that I do is I look to see if they own multiple properties in the city. And in one case recently, the homeowner said, well, it's just easier for me. To collect all of them and bring them to one spot, and I'm like, well, how can it be easier? Versus, you know, doing multiple locations, so, uh, you know, so we've had those discussions, but. That, that's the, that's the issue that we've been dealing with.
So when you identify those management companies, um, do you find them? When they have like, say, over twenty mattresses or something like that?
A lot, in, in, what I've done is I've done two different things, number one, they usually get a letter from me that says, hey, you're, you're on our radar. For this, number one. And number two, if it ends up continuing, we then end up just basically stopping trash service for them, and they have to get private trash. So, you know, we let them know, you know, hey, this, this is on our radar. And, you know, uh, and as part of this ordinance, one of the things that I'm doing is that I want to cap it to fifteen a year. Now, I think that's still high, but, you know, if somebody has a three-family house. And, because one of the things we do deal with from time to time, somebody buys a three-family house. There, they want to rent it out, they go in and they find out that there's all this junk left. And so they put stuff out, so I know that that happens, and, you know, we try to be as sympathetic as we can. But when you're coming to us, you know, one time asking for ten, and then three weeks later, ten more, and then five weeks later, ten more. That's, you know.
Right, so I'm just wondering, yeah, and I, I agree with you. And I'm just wondering if there's a way to, I guess, maybe identify those management companies in addition. Or maybe before we cut off the trash services, um, you know. Actually make them pay for getting rid of one or thirty-five mattresses in that year somehow, just so that we can offset that, um. That hundred and fifty thousand deficit that you talked about.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, counselor.
No, go ahead, sir.
No, what I was gonna say is, as I mentioned before, we put a cap on it, I put two caps on it, cap number one is. Per appointment, we're only gonna pick up five, for the year, we will only pick up fifteen. So if you are a management company and you're trying to bring stuff in from the outside, that's gonna significantly hurt you as well of not being able to do that. Because we've gone back and looked at anybody over fifteen, and there's, you know, hundreds of addresses, and we've kind of gone through. And where I'm seeing it is mattresses, I'm not seeing it with TVs, I'm not seeing it with anything else. But that, that's been the main, that's been the main issue, bay number of, of, of the additional collections.
Okay, a- and I don't know, I don't think I have a problem with, um, increasing the, um, the cost of getting rid of a mattress. I'm just hoping that maybe the community, um, agencies in our, in our area, if someone really does have a problem. You know, with the sixteen dollars, maybe some of our agencies can help out, like the, um, you know, Springfield Partners or New North or something like that. Maybe can help them with like, a kind of like a discounted thing, um, but I think for the most part. I think it's fair, because, you know, if big management companies are doing that, then they should be paying for it, so, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I agree, thank you.
Thank you, counselor, uh, uh, I had a question as far as, uh, and it, and this is kind of, um. It, it's kind of as far as with, uh, maybe three-family homeowners, apartment. Now, say I'm a homeowner, does a city, does a city has, have anything where an individual can, uh, contact? If they were, someone put in a, put a, put a mattress outside of their house, say someone illegally put something out there, say, uh.
It happens every day, every day.
Yeah, so in Counselor, uh, Perez area, you know, she'll tell you, like, they'll just go and they'll put them, so now they put it right in front of my house. What, what can, if a person now has that on camera, um, is there something, the city? Do we have something, or what, what would a person do if they see someone illegally dumping? Do, 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 does a regular, average Joe constituent, if they're, if they have it on a recording. Is that enough to give to the city? What would they do with that stuff?
Uh, I, I would say to them first, get that information to three-one-one. Because, like I say, it happens every day, we get calls every day for stuff being illegally dumped. DPW, we probably pick up about twenty-five percent of that. The other seventy-five are actually picked up by Clean Cities, because that's what they're, that's what they're, you know, that's what their job is for the most part, so they're picking up a lot of it as well. So when we do get stuff dumped, uh, you know, we can talk to three-one-one, because somebody will call us and say, hey, there's five mattresses, uh. In front of, in front of my property, and I, I found it funny in one particular case. Where a apartment building that had about fifteen of them called us and said, we need you to pick them up, we said, we can't pick them up. You're, we don't collect trash from you. So I get a call the next day from the neighbor saying, hey, they moved them over and put them in front of my house, can you come get them? And it was like, well, you know, so we, we, we try to get with the, if, if somebody's calling for illegal dumping, get it to three-one-one, we can help them. Try to find out what's going on, and I'm not looking to, uh, you know, somebody who gets something, whatever it is, whether it's a TV. A couch or whatever gets dumped in front of their property, no, it should not be their responsibility. So we want to make sure that we can get as much information from them, and if they have a Ring camera, all the better, and we'll be able to get that from them. Usually that, I, from a Ring camera standpoint, we end up turning that over to the police, you know, their ordinance squad. Here that works out of Tappy, so we can end up working with them to get that info.
That's, that's, that is great to know, because a lot of constituents in my area also, I mean, we, we have some issues like that. I, I, I never, I never knew, um, I, I, when they asked me, I wasn't sure exactly, uh, what the process was, so it's, it's glad to hear that. And I wasn't aware that we can actually just take a, a trash bag and put it right next to our trash bin. So you say we just take a, a, a regular trash bag, put a two-dollar sticker on it, and you guys are gonna take it, correct? See, I never knew that at all.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter what size it is, so you can get the big ones.
Okay, so that, that's good to know, um, I don't, I don't know, um, if any of my other colleagues have any other questions real quick? Anything? Counselor Allen? Have you got to unmute? You gotta unmute, Counselor Allen. No. Well, wait, Counselor, I know Counselor, yeah, I, I'm sure he's probably trying to get back on, I'm sure he, he has a, maybe a, a, a question or statement. But, uh, with, with that in mind, I'm, I'm just, um.
Alright, you guys there? Alright, so, um, I guess my, I'm glad you're trying to update this, Chris, and I'm not sure exactly everything you want to get done Tuesday. I know you want to do the stickers thing, but, um. It seems to me that you guys have been pretty liberal with, um, your policies allowing. You know, thirty-five mattresses at a, and, or whatever, you know, at, at a location. It seems to me it should be more. Somewhat more strict, and I, I know you're doing that, but if it's too strict, if you're concerned that it's too strict, then somebody can ask for more, they can ask for an exception. But, um, it's just. I mean, we're, there's, basically the people in the city of Springfield are paying for mattress disposal. For a lot of people from who knows where they're from. And, I, I mean, I, I'm surprised you're not asking for more. Rather than just doubling from eight to sixteen, I'm kind of surprised you're not asking for twenty or thirty or something, because it seems justifiable. Based on the numbers. So, uh, uh, you know, you have my support on sixteen, but you'd also have my support on a higher number. And, um, so it's just, uh, looking at the, at that sheet you sent along to me a little while ago. It's kind of staggering, I mean, I think you said earlier in this meeting, is thirty, thirty, there were thirty today or something? I mean, it's just.
Average, yeah, we average thirty a day, thirty to thirty-five a day.
It's mind-boggling. It's mind-boggling, thirty a day, I mean, times two-hundred-and-fifty workdays, seventy-five hundred mattresses. I wouldn't be, I mean, I know we have restrictions with people can't afford. You know, we don't have a population that can afford anything we put on there, but by the same token. A lot of the people who are paying for them, there's a lot of, a lot of us are, and other people paying for mattress, uh, disposal for other people. So, um. Certainly at my support on sixteen, but I, I think, given what you said, sixty-five in Ludlow, twenty in Chickaby. You know, why wouldn't we go at least to twenty and match Chickaby? And then nobody from Chickaby would have any advantage coming to us. And, you know, anyway, that's my thought, so.
I, I was gonna have, uh, make sure Robert, uh, Robert Chuchuk, uh, place the items on, back on the agenda. For Monday, and obviously we can have, I don't know what the agenda for Monday is gonna look like, but. Uh, obviously, we can have some more discussion, uh, at the council meeting on Monday.
So what would the items be besides the eight to sixteen, what's the other individual?
It, it's, and I'll send it out, counselor, to everybody again, uh, it's just, you know, some, some minor. There's a lot of minor language changes, because the two documents, I don't want to say had conflicting information. But I just wanted to make them, excuse me, as consistent as possible. So that somebody didn't look, look at one document and say, oh, you place your barrels a certain way. And another document said, hey, place them another way, so it, in the document that I'll send around, everything in red. And, and I'll send it around to everybody tomorrow morning, everything in red is what we're, uh, what we're modifying. And putting in the or, in the ordinance, a lot of what, you know. Exactly what for yard waste, what we will take and won't take. It's in our rules and regs anyways, as far as on the website and stuff like that, but at least it's, it's in the ordinance, uh. So that, you know, we can then, I can then post this once it's approved. Post it, get it out to the residents, uh, you know, as much as possible to let them know what's going on. And other than, you know, everything on there, for me, is just trying to be consistent. You know, so that I don't have a resident saying, well, one document says to do it this way, and the other one says to do it the other way, so. There isn't anything, uh, uh, major, in my opinion, uh, that, that changes the way. A resident would have to, you know, deal with us on a daily basis.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor, um.
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor Davlia, he has a, another question, Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just to follow up with Counselor Allen, I, I. Going back to the one hundred and fifty thousand deficit that we're running on DPW on yearly basis. Question, I think, I think he's right, I think, uh, that twenty is a good starting point, I, I might even consider twenty-five, I don't know. But I think that, you know, I'm just thinking outside of the box here, as we, I'm thinking as we're talking. Uh, Chris, what if we give you some sort of, within the ordinance, some sort of mechanism? For you to use some sort of a matrix in which you can address the fee structure? If you see that this is not working, so you don't have to come back to us, asking us again, because, you know, you are the director, not me. I mean, I, I hear what you're telling me, but I also think that you should be able to address this yourself. And wrap it up quickly, so we don't want to continue to bleed, because I'm very concerned with one hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, so I'm just thinking. Out loud as we're talking, uh, think about it, if that makes sense, some sort of mechanism in which you can slowly increase. If need be, if we don't, uh, meet some matrix, uh, throughout the year.
I can put that together and send that to you when I send the other information.
Alright, uh, thank you, Chris.
I got no problem with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other of my colleagues? Okay.
A lot of quiet people.
Well, you know, this is still just, uh, you know, following up certain issues, I know. You know, we'll still maybe have a few questions here and there, just try to iron it out. You know, but this was still a good meeting, uh, always a pleasure, Chris. You know, I know with this, uh, these different, no one really likes to, uh, to, to, to add fines and things like that, but it's a necessity. Especially even when we're talking about, uh, disposal, uh, when it comes to the mattresses and things. So, um, you know, I definitely commend you in the work that you do, I, I think collectively, when we're working together, I, I'm sure we can come. To, uh, something that'll help the people out. But, um, I do thank you for being here, Chris, and thank all my colleagues for being here. Uh, with that in mind, uh, I want to adjourn the meeting and, uh, everyone has a, have a good day, thank you.